Gloria Gonzalez Delakia, here. Anna Smith, here. Trish Bodie. Shadé Fashakoun. Francesca Romans, here. Paul Gautier. Shadé Fashakoun.
Here. Did you forget me? I'm here.
Christine Maurer.
Here. Thank you Cindy. It is 16:00 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We're going to start with our student pledge and I would like us to welcome Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Redima Gupta, a junior at Leander High School and is the daughter of Kazum and Vinad Kumar Gupta. Cadet Gupta is the Community Service Non-Commissioner Officer in Charge of Organizing AFJ ROTC Community Service Events. In her free time, Cadet Gupta enjoys reading and aspires to be a rescue pilot. Well done Cadet Gupta. Please stand.
Okay, please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all. Now turn and face the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you'll join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you again Cadet Gupta.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move over to our spotlight on learning and we're going to hear from some of our outstanding students and staff from Pleasant Hill Elementary. Come on up.
President, School Board, hey, that's what I'm talking about. That's more what I'm used to, hearing myself talk. Madam President, School Board, amazing School Board, and Dr. Gearing to our Superintendent. Thank you guys first of all so much for your selfless work and all of the time and efforts that you put in, we really do appreciate you. Thank you for having us tonight. Also, a big shout out to all the amazing people in the audience that help support our schools and our staff. From my principal heart, I just wanted to say thank you. There's so many people in this room that really help and support us, so just wanted to give y'all a shout out as well. My name is Heather Robbins, I'm the very proud principal at Pleasant Hill Elementary. I've been part of this district for almost 25 years, so it's just really an honor for me to be here. This is actually in my eight years as principal at Pleasant Hill, this is the first time we've ever been spotlighted, so it's just a really important thing for us and I'm so excited we get this opportunity, absolutely. I am not going to talk much longer, but I do want to take a moment to introduce the very important people that we have here tonight. When I say your name, if y'all will just wave and say hi. First of all, I have our AM Cafeteria Manager Caroline Rodella, she's a 4th grader at Pleasant Hill. I have our AM Car Rider Patrol Member, that's Riley Smith, she's in 4th grade. I have PM Car Rider Emilio Medina, he's in 4th grade. I have our AM Flag Patrol Member, that's Naomi Ariano, 4th grader. I have our AM Front Door Manager, that is Sofia Gaetan, right here in 5th grade. She's our leader. And then last but not least, our Office Transportation Support Manager, and that is Reese Robbins, and she is a 4th grader. Really importantly, I have Missy Rodriguez here, who is an amazing teacher, she's an amazing educator, she is our dyslexia specialist on campus, but she is also my inspiration for having Safety Patrol. The reason we wanted to highlight this for our safety reasons and for our safe and secure school is because this is something that had faded out and had gone away and we were trying to think of a way to have ownership of the safe and secure learning environment and Safety Patrol was born again from the ashes and Missy Rodriguez is the only reason that it's happening. So I'm gonna let her take over and she's going to ask the kids a few questions.
Thank you. Alright, I want to ask y'all some questions. Caroline, what motivated you to become a Safety Patrol Member?
What motivated me to become a Safety Patrol Member is the joy on people's faces I see when I help them.
Naomi, what responsibilities do you have as a Safety Patrol Member?
I have responsibilities by keeping the school safe and being responsible and following the school rules.
Emilio, how do you ensure younger students understand and follow the school's safety rules?
To be behind the red line and don't run.
And where is the red line? Is it by the curb?
By the curb.
Yeah, yeah, you make sure they stay safe?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Reese, how do you work together as a team with other Safety Patrol Members?
I help, me and my teammate help pass out transportation notes for the students to understand where they go at the end of the day and to understand how they get home.
Yes, that's very important, thank you. Riley, what did you have to change to become a Safety Patrol Member?
I had to get up earlier to make sure I was on time.
Yes. Alright, Sophia, what do you enjoy most about being a Safety Patrol Member?
What I enjoy most about being a Safety Patrol Member is getting to see all the smiling faces in the morning and getting to make new friends every single day and I really enjoy getting to help my school, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I'm just so proud of them. It's my first year, it's their first year, and we've been a great team, so thank y'all for y'all's support in helping me do this.
I had the pleasure to see a lot of y'all in action last week and I saw the stay behind the line, that's at the car rider pickup, so as cars are coming up, they're making sure they were keeping everyone safe as the cars are coming up, keeping everyone behind there. And so, y'all did a really amazing job and the end of day saying like, hey, I hope you have a great day, I hope the rest of your evening, just sending everyone off on that high note, you know, and seeing from some of their friends doing that, you could tell it was really impactful to a lot of little people getting in their car. So what y'all do is really important, thank y'all for doing that, thank you.
Thank you all again for having us, thank you.
Thank you students and staff and moms and dads and brothers and sisters of Pleasant Hill, let's give them a round of applause, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our video recognitions highlighting a few of the very incredible things that are happening in Leander ISD.
Welcome back one LISD, I'm Aya and I'm in 5th grade at Cypress Elementary School.
And I'm Cameron and I'm in 5th grade at Cypress Elementary School. Many people from across the school district have been hard at work to show how we here in Leander shine bright. Let's hit the ground running by celebrating the success of one of our high school's basketball teams.
The Cedar Park Lady Timberwolves made it all the way to the UIL State Semifinals. With a regular season record of 27 wins and 11 losses, we're howling over such an outstanding year and we hope next season is even better. From courtside to the band hall, a couple of our music educators have been given a distinct honor.
District Fine Arts Director of Music and Performing Arts Mike Howard and Henry Middle School Head Band Director Robert Herring were inducted into the American Band Masters Association. Herring's have been earning accolades and recognition through his 20 years of service at HMS. Howard was once the head band director at Vandergriff High School and helped bring many honors into the program. Congratulations to both of them for their exceptional leadership. Both athletics and fine arts continue to show up and show out, but they're not the only ones. Students in career and technical education are also earning well-deserved praise.
The Pro Stat Program helps students learn culinary skills and restaurant management principles. During the competition, students from LISD's two high schools with culinary programs, Glenn and Cedar Park, earned three third place medals, two second place, and one first place in the following categories. Design on the fly, pastry skills, couscous, set the table, spiced, and a team event in the Lone Star Culinary Reading. Through all of those accomplishments was enough for me to work on an appetite.
That's not all in the CTE world, we had multiple national qualifiers in the Texas Association of Future Educators State Competition. Between Glenn High School and Vista Ridge High School, LISD students brought home three first place finishes in categories such as impromptu, lesson, educator's rising moment, and the educational leadership fundamentals test. But that's not all, medals also included a top three finish in the differentiated lesson category and two gold awards in lesson planning and delivery, and the other for breakout session. Congratulations to all of these amazing students, this is just the start to your incredible career. To see the full list of names, check out the Leander ISD News website. Lastly, we have a group of amazing people we want to show our appreciation to.
It's School Library Week and here to help celebrate our quiet heroes in the quietest place on campus is the Coordinator for Library Services Becky Calzada.
Hello Leander ISD, Happy School Library Week. My name is Becky Calzada and I'm the District Library Coordinator in Leander ISD. I have the privilege of leading over 45 school librarians, library assistants, and media specialists in our amazing school libraries in Leander ISD. When's the last time you stopped by one of our libraries? You may have seen some students researching, reading books, you may have even seen them using digital resources or using some of our 3D printers and Mac Studio computers which were purchased with our Leander ISD bond funds. We love to see students integrate their technology because we know that engages students to create, build, and design some amazing things in our schools. I hope you'll make time to come and see what's happening in our school libraries because there's no place like Leander ISD libraries.
We're in the home stretch of the year, but there's still plenty to be excited for.
We look forward to seeing what else the Leander family can accomplish and always remember, there's no place like LISD.
Wonderful, thank you, and next we're going to move on to Citizen Comments portion of our agenda. Before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we'll watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Aya.
And my name is Cameron.
And we are 5th graders at Cypress Elementary.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all school children, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment.
The Board is now taking up the Citizen Comment Agenda Item. This is dedicated time during the meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family is listening.
The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment.
To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local.
The Board wants to hear from everyone, please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information.
Remember that the schoolchildren of all ages may participate in Board meetings, either by watching them online or might even see them one of us in the audience.
Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime.
When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks on the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Alright, thank you, we're going to start with Speaker One and I'm very proud that in Leander ISD, if we have any student speakers sign up, they will always be moved to the top of Citizen Comments. Speaker Number One.
Members, oh, sorry. Thank you to the Board Members, Superintendent Gearing, and LISD teachers and staff for all you do, and to the police officers here to protect us. Today, I'd like to share some thoughts about what we can learn from LISD's great work on community events like Monday Solar Eclipse. LISD teachers and staff did a great job planning the event involving the local community and letting families decide on whether or how they wanted to participate. There are so many videos of students at schools having a great time while learning about science. Equally though, other students observe the eclipse with their families and learn just as much. It was an awe-inspiring event that brought the whole entire community together in celebration and wonderment. I think we can learn from this. Public schools are a hub for our local communities. Children, families, and all generations can come together and create a sense of community. This sense of community is as inspiring as the eclipse itself. In this sense, the eclipse wasn't a one-time thing that won't happen again for another 20 or 400 years. LISD and its teachers and staff bring together our communities for special experiences like this throughout this and every year. When we are open to it, we can realize that many of these events give students and their families experiences, learning, and memories that will last a lifetime. I'm here to thank the district, the teachers, and staff, not just for this one event, but to express appreciation for all it does to make the places we live into communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Speaker Number One, Speaker Number Two. Move on to Speaker Number Three.
Yeah, thank you to the Board and to the staff and teachers of LISD, and especially this week the librarians. Is this working? Thank you to the Board, to the teachers and staff of Leander Independent School District, and especially this week the librarians, you provide access to the wisdom of the world. When I think about it, there's a lot of wisdom in this school district and I've learned a lot as a parent just from visiting classrooms, starting in elementary school and then beyond that, and a much better parent for seeing how teachers expect the right things from students and it's a wonderful experience. But that wisdom also lies with the students of this school district and I've certainly learned that as a parent, you know, having a kid who is smarter than me and more wise than me in a lot of ways, really makes a big difference. So I've long believed that the answer to improve the school district often lies with the kids and not necessarily with adults who sometimes fight with each other over things that really don't matter. So the thing that I want to say is, we shouldn't let things like political disagreements or problems in the school district eclipse our moments that we can have with the kids that are so special. Could be a band event, a track meet, a math event, whatever it happens to be. Those moments only happen once and we carry them with us forever. And I learned that from our daughters and all they have gone through and all they have learned in the district. That gives a sense of wonderment that we can take with us forever. And the kids will be fine, you are enough, you don't need to do more, you're great as you are, thank you.
Thank you Speaker Number Three. Speaker Number Four. I don't see. And that concludes our Citizen Comments portion of the Board Meeting. Next, we're going to move on to our Superintendent's Report, take it away. Oh, no, I just skipped one thing, so sorry about that. Let's go back to our Consent Agenda. We're going to look at the Consent Agenda Items. Board Members, does anyone have any items or any motions related to Consent Agenda Item?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented.
Aye, second. Trish makes a motion to approve, Anna, second. All those in favor? Seven ayes, motion passes. Now, we'll move to the... And actually, I guess I'm pretty anxious about the Superintendent Report. Am I making you nervous now? I'm sorry, okay.
Thanks a lot. I'm not anxious at all about the Superintendent Report. Alright, is this working? It's not on. Okay, turn it off. Okay, thank you. As was mentioned already, we had a very successful week, especially with the eclipse this week. The joy of having our community involved in the schools, of having, just hearing our kids delight. There was a lot of hype about it and with emergency declarations in both counties, we were preparing for the worst and so I personally hadn't really thought about the eclipse part enough until it actually happened and then I was like really, wow. It was really fun, so our kids had a fantastic time. So we want to showcase some of those under Safe and Innovative Learning Environments because this was an opportunity for us to make sure that our students stayed safe while experiencing science firsthand and so our staff did just an incredible job from the science folks at the central office all the way down to our principals and our teachers and all of the parents who came out and helped us to make sure that these kids had just an unbelievable experience. And we were blessed really with incredible break in the clouds at just exactly the right time, which really made it an amazing experience. So we just wanted to share some of those pictures of the wonder in our kids' faces as they experienced this moment. That was Danielson Middle School. Alright, we've been trying to gather some evidence for you and showcase a little bit about what learning is looking like across the district and so in this Empowered Staff segment, I want to just share with you a short video of one of our teachers at Tavon Elementary School.
Sorry, did you have a question about the...
He said, "Where did the question come from?" and I said, "It came from the provocation."
Yes, yes.
So we did this a couple different ways because we, in different classes, we saw, like we started with the squirrel and of course we got a thousand squirrel questions, all of them, color of the squirrel, what is the squirrel doing? So we're like, okay, that really didn't work, it didn't work the way we wanted it to, anyway, or it didn't go with the overall arching idea of the unit. So then we came up with another picture and we're like, okay, how can we show interdependency and have them get to those types of questions? So we added another question and, or another picture and that's how we kind of, we went from, we started here and then we sought our questions and then that guided us to the next step.
And it was a little bit of a pivot because it didn't, that particular provocation didn't guide where they really thought it needed to go, so they just changed it a little and then, and it did.
And I don't know if you told them, like even with my questions, I realized, hey, wait a minute, they really do know what interdependency is, but we're supposed to do basic needs and adaptations and all that and I was like, wait a minute, they don't know. They know features, but they don't know what that is called, adaptations. So now, I can guide it in that direction so that they can...
But she would have never known that had you just, you know, picked up the binder and read day for day, which is great, it's a great research, what I'm saying, but it's coming from the kids, which is so, just...
And we are using the questions and things from the binder, that's not, but that's like our, that's where we start in our thought process and then we give it, we hand it over to the kids and we allow the kids to take it where they're going to go with it, so, yeah.
Do you like it?
Do I like it? I love it.
What's different?
What's different? It's theirs, it's not mine. I just get to sit back and watch them.
So in terms of planning, it feels like there's more design and planning going on ahead of time and then when you get in here... And then when you get in here, it's more about what are they doing? And then you go back out again and reflect on what happened with your team and talk through, like, what do we have to adjust and and then you come back and give those things back to the kids and say, hey.
Yes. And it's not a, it's not a process where we are spending hours planning. It is a minute of, I walk into somebody's classroom and I, we talk about it quickly. Or I go and grab somebody and I say, hey, I need somebody to come and help me brainstorm. I don't know where I'm going next. And we look at it together. And so it's a quick, it's not an additional where I'm staying five hours after school to try and come up with. How am I gonna go there? It's a quick and it's based on what they, they need and where they're going. So that is their ownership, not mine. I just, I just make sure they're safe.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to, to be able to teach like this, to have that, that freedom to be able to do that. Um, so, thank you.
Good job, guys. So I, I know you met Annie last board meeting, um, talking about that learning board. This is the same learning board in a completely different classroom in a different school. Um, but those students are talking about the same things, in this case, interdependency. Um, and the power of that teacher who knows and understands that the students have to own the learning for themselves. Um, and so we're gonna continue to bring you those as we go by. Um, here's another quick clip, uh, this, this one of an administrator, um, and we just wanted to share, um, what this looks like.
So this is amazing.
Okay, but what this says to me is that you're out here visiting classrooms all the time.
All the time.
All this, but you can get your other stuff done too.
I can get almost everything done here. If I have to really concentrate, I need to be in my carpet. But most of the time I can do stuff in the hallway. I've been working as I've visited classrooms. So I have my love notes. I have the work I'm working on, you know, some of those administrative tasks. So, but yeah. I'm gonna say no, it's been everywhere.
Put it in the elevator and go upstairs and.
The hard part is when teachers decorate their classrooms real cute and there's a rug, then you see me like, I'm not the street.
Oh, so you go in their room with the whole thing?
Yeah, I stand in the back, hang out with kids. They come check out what I'm doing, talk to them about what they're doing. So, I, I mean, been several classes. So Karina knows, she'll just say, I'll just take care of everything and.
How do they find you and then you do on the radio?
They find me on the radio or she, everybody in the office has my calendar. So they can say, oh, she's here, she's there.
Oh, so you actually calendar it ahead of time?
And most of the time. Today I did not. I got a gift of time and I was like, I'm going Karina, see you later. So, but most of the time I'll try to block off times on my calendar to say walkthroughs.
Different, but do you tell them what grade level you're gonna be in or what?
Um, sometimes, sometimes, no, sometimes I just wanna go visit. And then the teachers sometimes will text and say, hey, what are you doing? Can you come up? And so I'll come up and see. And Ms. Freeman will too. So, yeah. But yeah, I'm gonna give this to Karina, take my little love notes.
So incredible ongoing support of teachers and what they're doing in the classroom. Um, and making it a point to be visible and in support of those teachers, um, as they go at North Elementary all the time. Alright, I think I have one more for you. Um, this again from North Elementary, um, and it's about empowerment of learners. But I just want you to listen very carefully to, to the interaction that happens right here. Great things are happening. Hi, guys. Did you see that little interaction right there? It's huge for that kid. You noticed?
Yeah, yeah. I love my kids. I love my naffy. They're just.
So I don't know if you heard, but she saw him at the gas station the night before in his baseball uniform. And now she saw him in the restroom as she was walking by washing his hands and made that connection. That connection is what is so important. So when I talk about each and every interaction, those are the kinds of moments that I'm talking about that really empower our learners, uh, Indiana ISD every day. Alright, that's all I got.
Thank you. Even though he was probably a little freaked out when he saw her at the gas station. Cause you're like, what? My principal goes to the store and gets gas, right? Um, okay, thank you for that.
Actually, I have more of a statement because I really appreciate seeing the videos that you're bringing because it brings all those documents that we worked on. It's like, okay, we've got a strategic plan, we've got core beliefs, and we've got our, you know, comprehensive base. I mean, there's, there's all this stuff that we're working on, but what does that actually look like? And so I appreciate you bringing that to us. Uh, last night I was a part of Central Texas School Board Association and we got to go visit a district where teachers talked about what was important to them and why they were still staying at that district. They have a one hundred percent employment rate. Why are they there? And the teacher said, well, one, one teacher and others were nodding their head, said, I don't feel micromanaged here. I like not feeling micromanaged. And so my question was, what does micromanagement look like to you? They said, well, micromanagement looks like you're not listening to kids. It means that we don't see from the admin on campus. It doesn't, we don't feel appreciated and we don't get to talk to people. This is the opposite of micromanagement. This is what we wanna see and that you are replicating this in a district this size, I think is very impressive.
I, I have a comment. I think for me, what I really, really, really like, you know, we, for me, it's being able as a parent, but also as a school board member, to see that learning going on in the classroom. Because we, you and the board, we talk about, about what learning looks like now. And it's not gonna be the same kind of learning that I learned back in the day, twenty years ago, whatever, I don't remember. But what I love though is we are highlighting campuses that are doing these innovative learning environments that are fitting those students for that campus. And as a parent, I have one of those campuses. I love it, but I love that we're able to like share the good stuff because that's the stuff that we need to be talking about. Because good stuff is happening on our campuses right now and our students are being impacted by amazing educators. So I guess, you know me, I always gotta give my thought, maybe some more, more student, uh, things like you did with Tarvin right there. The interaction with those students, cause for me, that's, that's, that's the meat there. That's what we wanna see. That's the kids' learning. And just being able to see the way each campus highlights different learning environments, that, that's, that's the good stuff.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be continuing to bring those with you. So thanks to Daniel and Christina and the team cause they've been tagging along now, um, and spending a lot of time with us on campus.
Thank you. We're gonna move around some of our agenda items um, because we have some staff presenters that have to wake up very early in the morning to drive some buses. So, um, we're gonna move y'all to the front. So we're gonna start with agenda item seven C one. And that's our overview of our transportation department. Come on up.
See how hot it is. Heather Robbins was emcee. I was with her as an AP for a little bit and she, she's still here. Woo, that energy, she's still carrying it on. So, Madam President, Board of Trustees, I am very excited to be standing here cause I'm gonna sit down here in a minute and go let these four, but I'm gonna introduce them real quick for, uh, transportation update and then we'll move into hazardous routes. So with us tonight, we have Tracy Franco, our wonderful director of transportation. We have Ken Turner and Christie DeVilla, our two assistant directors. And then we have Ms. Kathy Cuff, our routing supervisor. So they are gonna take it away. They have done an amazing job with our transportation department. I'm so excited to be able to share this with them tonight. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ken.
Alright, there we go. Thank you for being here and thank you for having us. Uh, some great and exciting things are happening at transportation. And, uh, we're excited to be able to share a little bit with you. So first and foremost, especially excited for us are our new buses. We have, uh, the two grants that were provided for us, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, TCEQ, and then PTA, Parent Teachers Association bought us buses. So basically through those two grants, we were able to purchase ten new sped buses, special education buses, alternative fuel, which is propane, which is a clean air. And then two new sped buses purchased through the Texas PTA grant. And then the twenty twenty-three bond, we were able to purchase and are purchasing forty-three new buses. Now, for transportation people and people who drive buses every day, this is like having a new car. We are, our, our, our department, our drivers, our monitors, we're excited. Uh, forty-three, so twenty-eight of the forty-three are gen ed buses. And twenty-five of the twenty-eight are propane, that clean fuel air, clean fuel, uh, alternative fuels, propane. And then three are diesel. Um, fifteen sped buses were purchased with that, with that bond, uh, alternative fuel. And excitedly, all of these buses will have seat belts and integrated seats. The integrated seats, just so you know, are those seats that pop out of a regular seat for our little kids, for our pre K, uh, three, pre K four. They're built in and it's pretty cool, pretty exciting. Um, moving on. Our, we have a new camera system for all of our buses, which is super exciting. There's a company that we partnered with called Safety Vision. And, uh, we were able to install, uh, on one hundred and eighty-seven buses and activity buses through the twenty-three, twenty-three bond, uh, Safety Vision camera system. And with this camera system, just to tell you a little bit about it, it incorporates a three hundred and sixty view around the exterior of the bus. That's what we call the danger zone. So anybody in transportation knowing anything about school buses, ten feet around a school bus is called the danger zone. And that's just not with Leander Transportation, that's across the nation. Any and every transportation department knows about the ten foot danger zone. That three hundred and sixty view around the bus allows us to see everything around that bus. If we're turning right, we have a camera view of what's on the right side of us, a bicycle, a motorcycle, a pedestrian, a car. If we're turning left, we've got the same view. So it's pretty exciting. It's integrated into the mirror. When we look into that mirror and we look at our kids, we can also see what's going on of, on the, in the ten foot danger, uh, zone of the school bus. And it is, it is, it's amazing. Uh, we have a backup view also in that bus. So when we reverse, you know, if you know anything about school buses, they have lots of blind spots, okay? So when we put the bus in reverse and we have to back up, we've got seven mirrors that we can tell what's all around the bus. But even more importantly and excitedly is the backup view that we now have with Safety Vision. So if we need to back up, we need to reverse, we can literally see in our mirror because there's a little embedded, integrated camera, uh, video for us to see exactly what's behind us. So that's exciting. Uh, the sound quality of the new camera system is incredible. So when we have to pull videos and tend to different things that happen on the buses, we can hear. We can hear the conversations, we can hear different things that we need to hear. It's pretty incredible. And the total all, overall quality, the clarity of the, uh, Safety View cameras is incredible. Night and day difference from what we had previously. So, uh, we're excited about what's going on over in transportation. So it's not the same transportation that I grew up with, um, years ago. And, uh, it's a lot of innovations, a lot of cool things are happening with the, uh, just the twenty twenty-three bond. And then this last slide, I am super excited about, all of us are excited about. Myself, Tracy, Christie, uh, um, Kathy, Brandon. We have worked super, super hard in building a culture at transportation that's positive, is optimistic, uh, it's attractive, and we like to say it's magnetic. People love being a part of what we're doing. They're excited about it. Um, last year, this time, twenty twenty-three, we had a forty percent turnover rate. Uh, not so good. This year, ten percent. We've reduced that to ten percent, right? Absolutely. I like that. Thank you. And, uh, that's exciting, you know, I mean, especially when everybody and their brother are hiring CDL drivers. And you all, just like me, have probably heard some of those commercials where they're attracting CDL drivers. They're paying five thousand dollar bonuses, eight thousand dollar bonuses. But our people are staying with what we're doing. They're excited about belonging. They love it. They love what we're creating. And we have worked hard, proactive, I would even say aggressively, just to create a culture where people feel valued. They love being a part of what we're doing. We, uh, we are part of support services. So that's one of the things that we preach and teach all the time is that we are supportive. We support the campus, we support the district, we support the teachers, we support the children. We are supportive and we're also partner with everything that's going on in this district. Um, through our one-on-one surveys with transportation staff and employees, we have given our employees an opportunity where they can be heard, where they can take ownership in what we're doing. We have panels that we do at our safety meetings where it's not just us up there talking and preaching, this is what we need to do. We have literally giving our people ownership by having panels that are comprised of all of the drivers, all of the monitors, all of the staff. And they get to give stories, they get to give testimonies, they get to answer questions from their peers about transportation, how to handle different things, student management, uh, all of those kind of things. We, uh, recently did a survey, or excuse me, a panel. We had, um, we had what we call newbies. We had our, our, uh, people that had just gotten hired and trained and licensed through transportation. And then people that were with us for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years on that panel. And it was exciting just to have them take ownership in mentoring their peers from a panel situation. Also, we've done monthly interactive department meetings with our employees. We call them safety meetings, department meetings. And that's where we just talk shop. And those meetings where we talk shop are basically where our employees get to ask questions. They get to interject their own thoughts. And again, it's all about ownership and family. Lastly, uh, we have taken, like I said, a proactive and even an aggressive approach just to cultivate and build a positive environment, an optimistic, optimistic environment where our people feel valued. They feel heard. They feel a part of what we are doing. It's not just us at the top. They get to interject their opinions, their thoughts. And I'll be honest with you, bus drivers are honest. And sometimes I wish I would have worn my steel toe boots. And it's like, okay, but that's okay. We have given those surveys and we have had those one-on-one meetings so that we can hear from them. What can we do better? What is it that you want us to hear? What is it that you want us to know? What is it that you want to be heard? So that we can make this a better place. And the exciting thing about it, forty percent, now ten percent. And we're doing our best to even drop that ten percent down to five percent, four percent, three percent, and so on. Well, anyway, thank you so much. I could talk all night because I'm excited about what's going on at transportation. Excuse me.
Good evening. Just a couple of things I wanna touch on on what transportation is doing to support the special programs within the district. So transportation continues to provide transportation to multiple special programs throughout the district such as golf, hospitality, J R O T C, the live program, accelerated math, clinicals, early college, gifted and talented quests, ready, set, teach, swim, and tutorials. We also, um, support the McKinney Bento Homeless Education Act. Last year, we transported ninety-eight students in district. This year, we're at a hundred and ninety students in district. Um, we have transported twenty-six out of district students. Last year, at this time, we were at thirty-nine students. Our special programs com, uh, consist of about three to five thousand miles per day. Our whole program runs, our buses are on the road about fifteen thousand miles every single day. Um, we support extracurricular activities for football, U I L, U N A.
Is that okay? Okay. I, I don't want to skip over the fact of the amazing things y'all have done in transportation. And I experienced it, and I think we've all experienced it in different ways. I experienced it and I got to ride with the Band of San Antonio on our school district buses one time. And then we did, um, the chartered buses another time. And I can tell you the difference was night and day. And what made a difference was those bus drivers and the interactions and they knew their students. Y'all, it's not only just the first classroom of the day, like you are intentional and purposeful. And I thought it was just an amazing experience to be a part of that and really watch our bus drivers. Um, thank you for inviting the board. I know you've invited us to your events. Please keep doing that, although we can't make it to all. We love being a part. And I'm seeing, I think we're seeing the difference in culture and that means so much. And when I run into your bus drivers or I hear your bus drivers talk, there is pride that they have there. And I think that is beautiful. And, um, y'all, y'all have worked really hard to achieve that. And so I just, you, you know, I called y'all about hazardous routes three months ago. So I know we're gonna have that conversation, but I don't wanna skip over the work and the amazing things y'all have done. Thank you. And it means something to our kids. So thank you.
I have a really quick question about the smart.
I have a really quick question about the SmartTag app. So I know that we use the web version of it, but we don't use the app version of it. I had a parent ask me about that. Do we not have the app version of that and only the web?
The parents should have access to the, the parent portal or the app that they can have on their phones. Yes. Yeah.
I have a really quick question as well, sorry. Um, I just wanted to ask, I know last year, one of the things that y'all were working on was also crossing guard retention and hiring more crossing guards. I was just curious as to where those numbers are now.
Um, we are doing better this year. I won't say that we're perfect yet, but we are still actively hiring, just like we are for bus drivers and monitors. And it's a long, we, we put up banners, we're doing like, as far as, uh, the, the promotions and the marketing, we're doing everything that we can, putting the, the information out there for people to apply. And we're trying to spread the word, this word of mouth is really the best kind of option for us as far as that goes, because it's a very specific schedule for very specific, specific people. So yes, but we're continually actively trying to find you bus drivers and being very strategic, excuse me, uh, crossing guards, being very strategic where we try to place them, the ones that we do have. So, yes.
So, um, great job with that ten percent retention number. I saw it and I was like, what are they doing that they can share with everybody else that we can learn from you? Um, or turnover, rather, I'm sorry. Um, however, when it comes to, um, open positions, what is, what does that look like? I mean, we do hear from certain, and you probably heard from them as well, certain neighborhoods where the younger ones are increasingly have to get up, get up earlier to get on, to ride the bus. And what would be some of the factors that are affecting that?
So, some of the factors that would affect that would be, um, so historically, we've been trying, because of there's, there's been such a deficit in drivers, we have been very, very slim on our, or, or more efficient with our bus, uh, bus routes. And so that means that we're using our resources to a greater capacity. So they're driving more miles, they're picking up more students, rather than adding a whole new bus, which would then take a new bus driver or a bus monitor, both. And then so we're trying to use, utilize our resources as best we can. So that, unfortunately, that's the effect that we see is sometimes the students are having to wake up earlier, get on the school bus earlier, and that sort of thing. However, we are trying to be very, um, very conscious of that fact, you know? But, uh, but sometimes that's just the way it's playing out. As we get more, uh, staff involved with, with being a driver and that sort of thing, we'll be able to ease up on that a little bit. And we already know for next year that we're gonna have to add a couple of routes to, to help alleviate some of this, um, some of this stuff that's going on. Yeah. And as far as the open routes, we, we are really, um, tracking very well as far as open routes. We have, uh, we only have about, I think the last I looked, we have about fifteen actual open bus driver spots that are still left. And out of that, we probably only have about seven ra, actual routes that are not covered, that we're having to use alternates or, or sub-drivers on.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, I've been wanting and asking y'all tons of questions about hazardous routes ahead of time. We'll get to that in a bit. But one of the things I've been thinking about is, is there a way to do universal transportation across our campus? And that's been the word of thought of like, okay, but how many buses would we need? How many bus drivers would we need? Could our campuses even hold that many buses? And so it got me to think, based on some answers and some research and some preliminary things I've done, maybe I should look at this different. Because is the better answer, how are we best using and, and letting our transportation people do what they do well? And are there other resources to help or support? So then I'm thinking, okay, so what would be a comprehensive transportation? I'm changing and pivoting the word. And I'm thinking, one of those things are, when I looked at policy and I remembered, because we're on the policy committee, it talks about a community walking transportation program. And I remember, um, what was it, about a year ago? I said, hey, what's going on with this situation? And I got an email back from your department that said, well, if, you know, there's bus-school-walking systems, that helps in the community as well. And there's things we could do, and there's other opportunities besides just trying to only purchase more buses and more bus drivers. We can do things smart. And so I would just like to encourage y'all, and I think, you know, I'm curious of the board, I don't want to turn up the spin your wheels if it's not board-supported. Love to, if y'all have other things that we could do to help support our bus drivers so that we can get support in our students' transportation, what is that? And what do we need to do? What does that look like? So I'd love for y'all to get that to us.
Okay, we, so we can do some research and kind of, kind of think through that in our discussions. That's okay.
Thank you. Before we move into hazardous routes, just want to thank you again for being such an important part of our community. You know, you talk about those relationships of starting the day and ending the day. I love when I go to an extracurricular event and there's the bus driver sitting in the bleachers, wearing like his robotics t-shirt, cheering on the team, or this band t-shirt. And so it just shows so much about, you know, being, being a part of our community. So we appreciate you, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
And now we will move over to the next, and everybody can just hang tight. Uh, we're gonna move over to the next agenda item, and that's gonna be seven C two, discussion of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five hazardous routes.
All right. Get my slides ready. Okay, so the purpose, uh, for this presentation is for, uh, for the Board of Trustees to overview their hazard area evaluations completed by the Transportation Leadership Team and Administrative Recommendations for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so why we evaluate annually? First of all, TEA requires us to, to evaluate our hazard routes annually. Um, they, they will not, um, they will not support us over about ten percent. Uh, if we have ten percent of hazard routes, that's where they will support us, and then anything beyond that is on us to do. So, um, so we, we, we just, every year, we will go through and decide which areas that we're going to need to evaluate. Uh, we use a matrix that was approved by the board in twenty-nineteen. Uh, we're always constantly looking at that, making sure that that is still a, a good evaluating tool. I believe it still is, because it's still currently working properly and, and the scores are still coming out, you know, uh, uh, properly, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say. Um, the state provides funding for public, uh, schools and bus students to and from campuses and two-mile or more from their home. So what we call the not eligible for transportation zone is the two miles within the campus to their home, and that's called, we refer to it as the net zone. And so that's just the not eligible for transportation. And that, the only way they would receive transportation is if that, uh, they score for our matrix, matrix as being hazard, hazardous. Um, so what we do is we send out, uh, community, um, surveys because we want to have the community feedback. And during the process of us going through and, and creating the new matrix, uh, the committee decided that the community needed to have more input, and that was one of the big things, that they wanted to have more ownership and input on, uh, what the matrix would look like. Also, let them know that, hey, this is fixing to happen, so what are your concerns? So this year, we, that starts usually around December, and then we have timelines that we have to meet, uh, to, to make sure that we get, get the proper, uh, the proper scoring, the proper walking of the neighborhoods, the proper areas that we're going to score. So this year, we had seven-hundred-and-sixty-four responses from about two-hundred-and-thirty-six neighborhood codes. Um, four-hundred-and-sixty-five or sixty, uh, almost sixty-one percent responded, did not even currently receive bus service. And a lot of that was just, um, how, you know, how are we doing? Or we don't want to lose bus service, that sort of thing. And then the two-hundred-and-ninety-eight, which is almost the forty percent responded, do currently receive bus service. And a lot of those are, again, we don't want to lose bus service and, you know, uh, things are going great. They just wanted to comment that, you know, things are going well. Or, or they had, uh, we did go through every single line item. We did evaluate everything and take into consideration all of the concerns that were, were presented. And so basically, the areas that were affected by current boundary changes, the rezoning, construction, et cetera, were not evaluated due to no changes. So basically, uh, several years ago, when we had the new matrix, we scored everything. So we scored all the areas, and then so now we had the baseline scoring for everything. So going forward, we were just concerned with anything that was changing. And as you all know, we have a lot of growth around, uh, the Leander ISD district. So those are the areas that we really are concerned with. And of course, you know, as the growth comes, we have to have rezoning. So then that, that triggers another reason that we might reevaluate or evaluate an area to see if, uh, you know, what does, what the construction looks like. And also the rezoning now, this, this campus, or this neighborhood might go to one campus where now it's gonna go to another. So we have to do, go back and redetermine or rescore to see if it's now going to be hazard. Do we need to now give them transportation? Or did, did they get to a, a closer school? So now they're within the two miles, so, and everything is fine, they can walk to school. So that's what, that's where we go through and we read everything, and that's how we kind of assess the, the evaluations. Um, so this year, we concluded that these were the, uh, neighborhood codes that we needed to assess. And this was basically only due to rezoning and to new, the new elementary campus opening, um, Don, Donald Heisel Elementary School. And so I will go through some of these other ones, some of the, each one. Okay, so, uh, Cedar Park High School, Cedar, uh, Cedar Park Middle School, Neighborhood Code two thousand, that was, the reason that we evaluated was because it did get rezoned, and they were originally going to Vista Ridge High School and Henry Middle School, and now they will be going to Cedar Park High School and Cedar Park Middle School. And so there was, some of the comments were, the, the parents were concerned that the students would have to walk down Lakeline and Cypress Boulevard, very dangerous. And once the rezoning takes effect, our children will be required to cross it. Our findings were that the, um, the sidewalks are, uh, wide, long, along Lakeline, and the sidewalks and trails throughout the, um, neighborhoods provide ample, um, you can read ample paths. So the scoring, the scores were well below the hazard route score. Um, so recommendations at this time, the neighborhood is partially in the net zone for both campuses, transportation will provide for the areas outside of the net zone. So part, part of the, uh, neighborhood, um, Neighborhood Code two thousand is well outside of the two, two mile. So we will send a bus to the back of that area that will, we will provide the transportation. But then anything within the two mile, we found that it was, they did not need the transportation. We're recommending to not have it. Um, our Cedar Park High School, Cedar Park Middle School, again, twenty-ten evaluation reason was again, the rezoning from Vista Ridge and Henry Middle School to Cedar Park's, uh, middle and high school. The findings were that the Cedar Park High School is outside the net zone. The Cedar Park Middle School has, uh, one street that falls into the net zone with the rest of the neighborhood code falling outside of the net zone. The scores were, the, it was really close. So the score was four-hundred-seventy-two-point-five. So the transportation, so we recommend that transportation will be provided for the neighborhood code, because that is, we've determined that that is the best for the students in the area. Um, so here's one, the Neighborhood Code twenty-two-hundred. The evaluation reason again was for the rezoning from Vista Ridge High School, Vista Ridge, uh, excuse me, Henry Middle School to Cedar Park High School, Cedar Park Middle School. And this had to do with several apartment complexes. There's the Lodge on Lakeline, the Arbors, uh, there are, um, so all of the arbors for Cedar Park Middle are within the two-mile net zone. And the Arbors east of Old Mill Park is outside of the two-mile walk zone. So it's just funny when you look at the map. And so when we look at the map, we're looking at what falls in within the two mile. Then we go out there and we walk it and we look at it. And so as we were finding this, the, they scored actually, uh, well below the, the, um, hazard scoring of the seventy-six, huh, uh, sorry, four-hundred-and-seventy-six. However, when we started looking at the safe walk zone, and that took the students outside of the two-mile walkout, I guess, because they would have to go through the neighborhoods and kind of cut around. So when we, um, and that was the safest walk path, which kept them with, kept them within the not hazard area. However, when we looked at it again, trying to find the faster way, it did take them down Cypress Creek. Uh, they did have to walk on the, um, what, the south side of Cypress Creek. And that did take them across several, um, uh, commercial driveways, and that, that took the score into hazard. So we determined that we needed to go ahead for, for the best, uh, best benefit of the students, that we did need to continue transportation for those, for that neighborhood code as well. Okay, uh, Neighborhood Code twenty-fifty-five. Now, this one is kind of, uh, funny, I think it's this one, no, no, no. Rezoning from Vista Ridge again, uh, to, and Henry Middle School to, to, uh, Cedar Park, Cedar Park High School, Cedar Park Middle. Finding that the two fifty, twenty-fifty-five falls within the net zone, um, as well as non-hazard scoring. So this is one apartment complex, basically. It's the Redstone Ranch, uh, right there on the corner of Lakeline and Cypress Creek. And they do not have to cross as many, um, commercial driveways, and the scoring came, came below the, um, hazard route score. So we determined that, uh, transportation will not be provided for the twenty-fifty-five for both Cedar Park High School and Cedar Park Middle School. Okay, this was the one that was funny, um, the twenty-two, twenty-five. So basically, all that's in this area is one apartment complex that's for senior living, that's fifty-five plus. All the rest is right there where the Randalls and the Golds Gym is. That's the only, actual only neighborhood living area. So we, so there's really nothing to, there's no students living in the area in that neighborhood code, so we're not providing any transportation. And even if there were kids, students, we would not, uh, I'd have to go back and look. That might fall kind of within the same area as the, the last one where we would just to determine to provide transportation. So if there's ever students that live within that fifty-five-plus community, we will transport them. All right. Okay, so the last, I think the last one here is the thirty-nine-hundred. This is for the new, uh, Donald Lewis Heisel Elementary. Um, and that the evaluation, the evaluation reason was because the, the new school and the rezoning from Baghdad Elementary to, um, Heisel Elementary. And so that entire neighborhood code is within the net zone and has safe walk passes through the neighborhood, and they will not get transportation. It's a lot closer than where they had been going. Um, oh yeah. Excuse me?
That's Divine Lake.
Oh, yes. This is Divine Lake? Or that one's, okay, sorry, that one is Divine Lake.
But we have a lot of concerns with thirty-nine-eighty.
Yeah. Okay, so we do have the one, I don't think I had the slide up there, I apologize for that. But we do have thirty-nine, um, eighty, the Neighborhood Code thirty-nine-eighty, and we were concerned about that one as well. And we will continue to, they will continue to receive service, uh, due to unsafe walk path. Yeah. So just wanted you all to know that as well.
That's around more transportation.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Okay, good, good. Thank you. Saving the day, Kathy. I thought I was going good. All right. Um, so basically, the summary, the findings and summaries is, after evaluating all the responses in the hazardous route survey, it has been determined that there will be no changes in service for the previously scored neighborhoods. And that was the, that was the entirety of the, the hazard areas. So we only chose to score the ones that we have already previously listed. And so the changes to the attended zones from Vista Ridge High School, Henry Middle School, to Cedar Park High School, Cedar Park Middle School, will impact those areas of the bus service because of the new net zone. And then the other one was because of the new elementary school and the rezoning for that. So those were, those, that, those are the ones that we did rezone, excuse me, uh, we did evaluate and create our recommendations. Um, so administrative recommendations. So administration recommends that the board approve the, uh, and provide to the Commissioner of Education pursuant of the policy CNA, legal and local, the defined hazard routes as presented and the discontinu, discontinuance of bus services for non-hazard areas in the not eligible for transportation zone applicable to the Leander Independent School District for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five school year. Discussion.
So I have a question regarding the hazardous route for, um, or Lakeline and Cypress Creek. So usually the comments that I hear have to do with more of crossing those large roads. Yes, they do have, um, crosswalks with the stop-and-go lights, but, um, people are still concerned about drivers not yielding or, yeah, just speeding through.
Right. So, um, we just go by our scoring matrix, and that's, that's the tool that we use, and that's, that's our guiding document that we use as far as making these scores. And so we take that, it has a scoring area for that specific thing right there. Um, you know, there's several things on the scoring document that we have to take into account. And so that does get some points, but then when you add everything up together, if it, if it scores below the four-seventy-six, then it is considered not hazard.
Thank you. I have a quick question about the net zone, because that comes up a lot. Um, it came up in the zoning meetings, I've heard it mentioned otherwhere. Why, why do we only bus outside of the two miles? Can y'all clarify, that is actually not just a Leander ISD policy. That zone actually comes from the state.
It comes from TEA, yes. And so they're the guiding principle behind that, that we, we refer to them as far as, they talk about the, anything within the two miles from the campus to the school, from the door, from the home to the campus. So that's why we do the two miles. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, y'all answered a lot of my questions earlier on. Thank you all so much for being just there. I mean, I, you have done an amazing job. Still have a couple of questions that I just want y'all to consider as we move forward. When you're doing all your amazing work with your scoring matrix, and I hear you say, well, we determined this wasn't gonna be good for our students, so we're going to give transportation. But there's another route where we're not. Still saying, when you're a parent hearing, you're not getting that route.
Yeah.
You're thinking, well, but I don't think that's safe for my child. You're, you're using, uh, a hazard scoring makers to help make these determinations, but when it gets very heated, the one thing the board is gonna start But when it gets very heated, the one thing the board is going to start getting is letters going, did you look at this rating matrix? Do you know what's going on? So my one question is, one of them, could you please like get the board a copy of the recent rating matrix?
Yes.
Just so we have a copy. And then my other question is on accidents. So there are some roads that have really, really dangerous accidents. And I don't know how that does or does not play, except that our, or impact our rating instrument, except that I've heard before, we can't have that impact our rating instrument. I would like to understand that better. I would like to make sure, and not tonight, but when we know there's a road that has had loss of life on it, casualty or a consistent pattern of traffic accidents? How does that, or does that not play? And just so we're aware and we can process that. And just like you said, and I understand there is a two mile zone. That instrument that we do is what helps determine that and y'all do a lot of work and time. The board approved it. The board doesn't need to approve that anymore. You're doing that work. I think it's just important to make sure we're aware of what we've proved. But thank you so much for all your work.
I have one clarifying question too. So are you asking about the roads that we're actually driving on or that the students that we're asking them if they, if they need to walk along or something?
If there's a sidewalk that the students are walking on and there's been cars that have jumped before. But maybe, you know, I, long stories, don't need to unpack it all, but it's just something I'd like to make sure I understand better.
Thank you.
I have a question. Slide four, it says, areas not affected by current boundary changes, rezoning, construction were not evaluated due to changes. When you say construction, are you meaning Leander ISD construction or are you meaning new housing construction? Because I live in the north part of Leander. Every day there's something new being built. I drive here away every day, which is not fun, let me tell you. But we have all these new housing coming up. So I guess my question to y'all is it, is it Leander ISD construction? Is it construction in the area? Like, did we just completely just ignore all the growth happening in the north? I'm just, what is that, what were y'all looking for?
So the construction is new housing construction. It's even like, like as you all know, the Raider Way and Wood View, yeah, that construction too. That would take into, that would be, that would take into account as well, but, but Leander construction, any kind of construction that is causing an issue for students. You know, if there's a lot of work trucks, so we go out and we look at all of that. And it, there's a score on, on our sheet for that specific thing as well.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question about the net zone. When we say two miles and how do we account for that in apartment complexes? Cause there's, some of the questions I've heard is this apartment complex starts over here and it goes all the way back there for almost half a mile or a mile. How do we account for children when we're saying from their door to school? Are we really looking at door or are we looking at the front of that apartment complex?
We're, yeah, we're scoring from the front of the, of the office, basically, at the apartment complex. And then we're scoring to the flagpole, if you will, at the, at the campuses.
Okay, that's something I think for us to consider because some of these apartment complexes are rather large. I know that would be a mess and a nightmare for y'all, but you're thinking like, how are we going to pick up some kids in that apartment complex?
That's where if, if, if part of the complex were to get transportation, then I would go ahead and just, we're going to transport the whole thing at that point. Because there's just no way to, because what we find now is if we have a bus that goes into a certain area where part of the neighborhood does not get transportation and then maybe the back half or whatever another part does, then the students know about it and then they go to that bus stop. And then we, and then we run into, yeah, then we run into then overcrowded buses. And then we have problems, especially now with smart tech, they badge on and then the driver see, you're not supposed to be on this bus. You're not eligible or what have you. But we take them to school, it's just the afternoon, that's where the problem lies. So that's, that's how I would say we would handle something like that.
I think that's a future discussion for us to consider. I know some of these apartment complexes that we've seen, you know, they're just, the way they're built, it could be adding like up to a mile of walk time for those students that live at the back of that complex.
There's some apartment complexes we pick up like at the front and the back if they have that accessibility. Some of that's just not accessible in a, in a school lunch. So that's another thing we have to take into consideration, the length of the bus going into a crowded apartment complex and all the speed bumps.
That's true.
And gated, we, to take a bus through a gate's not always the best idea either. So, you know, that's where we rely on the parents who get them to the front. And I mean, usually the pool's up there too, so they're used to going up to play in the pool. I'm good. I'm good.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. Are there any other questions?
No, I think what I thought I was hearing from you is that we should consider scoring from the back of the, or the furthest part of the apartment as opposed to scoring from the front. And then that way, if the entire apartment, if it, if it makes the entire apartment complex qualify, but they'll still pick up from the front. They don't have to go inside to go look for them.
Exactly, thank you, Shade. My only question is just if we're consistent, so that if there's a home, I mean, I've heard that before from neighborhoods that you're, you're looking at maybe more how a crow flies or, so I want to know if my child leaves the front door and goes around and gets on. That's really a little longer than two miles. However, we end up doing it, I just would like to make sure we're consistent. I think it's a good question. I just want to be consistent when we do the application process. And I can tell you, the hazardous process a few years ago, it's not the same as it is today. And I, I have to say that if you looked at it on paper, we've got the policy, we have the matrix, it's getting updated. I think there's something different with the culture because I'm hearing different things from parents. And so I think you are improving because you're intentional and you're building relationships. And I think that's vital, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you all being here and answering all of our questions. And I know we had a lot of them. We appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you, and please extend our gratitude to all of your team. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'd like to make a real quick plug. We're having our end of the year celebration and Dr. Gearing is our keynote speaker. He's coming to speak for us on May 2nd. And, well, he is. And if you all would like to come, it's 10 o'clock on, it's at Transportation North on May 2nd. And 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock. So we'd be thrilled to have you all come and be a part of that and see our team, see our people. And so 10 o'clock on May 2nd, we'd love to have you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Cindy, you gonna send us an invite or something? Okay, thank you so much. Thank y'all. Okay, we're going to move over to the next item, which is 7C3. That's consider approval of our food service management company contract renewal.
Good evening again, and of course we love Ken. He's, he's got to always close us out, so. So they're awesome. I just want to tell you, as we move into the contract renewal, the operations world is a much better place because of the work that transportation is doing and right into the contract renewal with SFE. What they've been able to do and what our partnership has been is what we're accustomed to, what we're used to, the service. And we still have things to improve on. So just a couple of things that I want to make sure to recognize and to bring up. Because I don't have a presentation, it's just a renewal, darn. But student meal prices, because of once again, our spend down plan, we're not recommending any increase to student meal prices. So I want to make sure you're clear on that. We still have a negative balance across the district around, it floats around 33 to 38,000, just to keep you aware of those things. So we monitor that weekly. We have partnered and we get constant checks in from PTAs, different groups, A-plus federal credit union and different organizations that do assist with that. But just to remind you, we never turn a student down. We provide a meal, we don't have that conversation in line. We make note of it and then a counselor or an assistant principal or an administrator follows back up with them. So it's not an awkward situation in line. But we're making sure our kids are fed and have some of those meals that they need every single day. Also, there's no changes to how we're going to serve for next year and what we're going to do over the summer. And so we're making sure we have those locations open and that we also continue that meal service into next year. So I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
I move that the board approved the food service management company contract as presented and authorized the district doesn't eat, Brandon Evans, to sign the contract with Southwest Food Service Excellence for the 2024, 2025 school year.
I second.
Anna makes a motion, Christine seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Seven ayes, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. And we're going to move right along to the next agenda item. And so we are going to move over to 7A1, empowered staff formative review.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Gearing. We are here to report on the strategic plan focus area of empowered staff with the goal of attracting, growing and retaining a collaborative community of first-rate employees who are empowered to meet the needs of each and every student. So we are not in Kansas anymore. Over the past few years, of course, we've seen a significant shift in teacher recruitment and retention. We have fewer university students seeking an education degree. And across the nation, there remains a teacher shortage. We have a couple of key areas that we have primarily focused on. One of which is prioritizing diversity recruitment to better reflect our students and community. And also we can, we are constantly exploring creative ways to recruit and retain highly, high-quality teachers for our district.
So recruiting is not about just clicking our ruby slippers together anymore. It's a lot of work by some very dedicated folks. And part of that starts with ensuring that we're increasing our applicant pool. We want to have the very best applicants in front of our principals for their hiring. And as you can see, we are seeing an uptick. We had a great increase in our applicant pool from 2122 to 2223. Now it looks like it takes a dive, but keep in mind for 2324, that is only through December 14th. So it has not, it had not at that time even reached our peak time, which is now. So we anticipate that that will be at least as higher, higher than the 2223 numbers. And the road to, the road to the Emerald City is paved with a lot of hard work. I know y'all have heard about and potentially met Jennifer Dunn and Jamie Brzezinski, who are our two unbelievable campus teacher recruiters. I call them the Energizer bunnies because I don't know how they do it. They are constantly working. I think they work in their sleep, honestly. So some of the things that they've done, we've done multiple sessions with community outreach to give information about how to become a teacher. If you've got a bachelor's degree, how to become a teacher if you've got an associate's degree or no degree at all. We've brought programs in from various universities and alternative certification programs to talk to potential teachers from the community as well as our instructional assistants who work in our campuses or admin assistants or registrars or receptionists, anyone in the district who's interested in becoming a teacher. So we do lots of work with them. We also have what's called Talk to a Recruiter. It's a button they can push on the website, fill out a little form and Jamie or Jennifer will call them and, and talk to them about anything they need to know. I think they must give their talks about that in their sleep because they say it so much. And it's, it has netted some great folks for us, so we're excited about that. They're constantly on social media, posting, sharing, not just that we're hiring, but also here's why Leander is amazing. So those are some of the things they do there. They go to universities and get in front of students before they're ready to be hired. While they're juniors and seniors and even sophomores sometimes to just talk about why Leander, to give them advice about resumes or experience or things to do. I love that I hear them talk about, you know, even if you don't choose Leander, teaching is an amazing career and they'll talk to all about why. And I think that says a lot about them and about our district, that we want people to be successful and want them to find the right place for them. We have extended our recruitment outside of just the borders of Texas. And so we're recruiting in some other states. We're fortunate that Jennifer follows UT and UT plays football in a lot of places. And so when she goes on a football trip, she'll drop off flyers out of college or put up a poster, do things. And we've gotten applicants from Alabama and arcs get their teaching certification, but then also provides a full year of support, mentoring, continued learning. And so we're excited about that. And it's through a grant and so it would be free for these folks. Stipends for student teachers is something we added to help recruit for our student teachers. And that's, that's been very successful. I know I'm talking a lot, so I'll try to skip over some of this. The one thing that I just think, when I talk about them being Energizer bunnies, over the spring job fairs, I sat down and figured it out. This spring, going to job fairs, they've covered 6,608 miles in a couple of months. That's a lot of travel. Some days they look very tired, but they still smile and they still answer all the phones and they still do all the screenings. It's amazing, it's amazing. So one of the things that we have been very focused on and continue to be very focused on is ensuring that our, our teacher population is a better mirror of our student and our community population. So we continue to see growth in those areas. As you can see on this chart, you've got our student population, our teacher population, and then overall campus staff. Because we also want to look at principals and APs and counselors and instructional assistants that are on the campus. So we want them to be able to see people that look like them around them, no matter where they are in the school. So we continue to focus on this. So this just gives you an idea of the breakdown of our applicants. So we are seeing increases in all of our ethnicities for our applicant pool. And then it gives you an idea of who was hired out of those applicant pools. And this is for general education teacher positions. And then this would be for our special education applicant pools. So once we get them here, how do we keep them here? Because that's really important too. So retention is a lot more than just giving them a contract and keys to a classroom and telling them good luck. We have lots of hard work that goes into that. We're happy to say that our retention rates are working their way back up. We took a big dip after COVID when we saw our retention rates go way down. A lot of folks left the education field. And so we are seeing that trending back up. So you can see our overall retention, that's for everyone, then teachers and then all other. With teacher retention, we're getting, we're getting closer to that Emerald City, getting us back up there. Of course, we want to be in the 90s. We want our teachers to stay. We want them to be happy here and want to stay. So we're moving in the right direction for sure. So I know a lot of times you like to see by level, how are we doing with retention? So this just gives you an idea of our gen ed teacher retention by level. So you've got high school, middle school and elementary and then our alt ed and non-campus. And we did include the number of people that is because as you see, at high school in 2021, 84% was 708. Well, we're at 84% again in 2223, but that's 720 teachers. So we're keeping more teachers, but we also have more teachers. So there's that. And then here's for special education, same information. And then we also look at teacher retention by ethnicity. We want to make sure that once we hire a more diverse workforce, then we're making sure that we are keeping them here in Leander. And we're seeing upticks in those areas for the most part, which we're very happy with. And then the, the last area in this that we'll have a graph for is teacher retention by critical shortage. And critical shortage is identified by T E A. Those are very hard to fill positions. So we're always tracking and monitoring, are we keeping folks in those positions once we get them here?
All right. So Ken did an amazing job talking about what they're doing in transportation to retain and improve their numbers. Just a few things that we're doing with our new to profession staff and what that retention work and shifts in our program have looked like over the last couple of years. So you can see the, the graphic in the middle around some of the core tenants of our program. If you look at retention research for new teachers, it talks about three main things really helping support our new hires. A sense of self-efficacy, community and mentor support. Those are three key things. And so the program has already had some of those components already included, but we've also tried to reinforce and highlight, support them in additional ways in the last two years. So we've added additional paid workshops on timely topics like classroom management and parent communication and instructional practices like cooperative structures and things like that to support teachers throughout the school year instead of just at the beginning of the year and in the mentoring support throughout. So some additional workshops supporting them. We've provided some additional support for our spirit exchange teachers where we're bringing in some very diverse and great international talent. But there's also a learning curve that comes in a little bit differently for that, that teaching population too. So we've provided some additional supports there. Our learning leader program that we're piloting this year has been a great source of teacher leadership and, and our new teachers being able to see classroom practices, classroom management live in a classroom and having those observation sites for them to go and learn while the student learning is happening. And then we have constant ongoing feedback loops where we're adjusting the programming based on what our coaches are showing us, what our campus leaders are telling us, what our, what our mentors and new teachers are telling us. So we're constantly seeking that feedback because we know teaching now is different than what teaching looked like even five years ago. Right? So how do we continue to keep our ear to the ground and understand the needs of our, of our teachers and support them in that way? Big shout out to our specialist of induction and mentoring, Jan Masterson. If you've never had a chance to meet the wonderful woman, she is a passionate firecracker. That is all about education and teachers and especially our newest hires. And she supports the systems and structures that are designed for our newest hires, but she doesn't do it alone. She does it in partnership with our HR team and she does a lot of work with them and the initial recruitment and identification and that continuing support. She does it with our teaching and learning team and partnering with our special program staff and our curriculum team and our pathways and innovation to make sure they have the specialized supports they need for whatever course they're doing. She partnering with our instructional coaches who are closest to the work that's happening, those individual teachers and, and really utilizing them and supporting them and supporting our new teachers. And even partnering with some of our alternative certification programs that, that we work with and really trying to make sure we're aligning your programs and supporting that staff in a way that doesn't overwhelm them or their mentor in, in the work that they're doing. So just wanted to make sure we give her a big shout out because there's a lot of work that goes into the design and support and collaboration that it takes to support all our new hires.
And of course, we can look at lots of charts, but what we really want to know is what do teachers say? Why do they stay? So we, we do state interviews with teachers. This is information that we gleaned from state interviews with about a hundred teachers. And these were the things that really keep them in Leander ISD. It's about the campus culture, their relationships with their teams, their positive work environment, the professional growth and development that's provided by April and her team, supportive administration. But the thing that really said a lot to me about the teachers that we have in Leander ISD is it overarching was their love for students and opportunity to make a difference in their lives. We also want to give a huge shout out to our community support for our teachers in the classroom with LEAF specifically with the grants that they provide to our teachers for professional development and innovative practices. And the Star Banquet that's also coming up here soon, a great event for our teachers to recognize them. And of course, our PTAs just providing enormous support for campuses to recognize and support teachers for their events and recognitions. Then of course, we have Heroes Mentoring, the Education Connection and Watch Dogs, wonderful programs that are all on our campuses, supporting and, and helping our teachers. And then we're going to pave our way path to leadership. And we have Paige here who is going to talk to you about some of the leadership programs as well as Christine.
Good evening. So Paige is actually going to take the lion's share of the slide, but I want to tell you why. So Paige Collier, as you know, is principal of one of our most impactful, beautiful models of dual language in Leander ISD. We have incredible schools, but Paige's school in particular is unique because of the leadership development that she does from the littles on up. So it is her love language leadership. I got to know Paige when I became her area superintendent more deeply a few years ago. And in her tenure in Leander as a principal, she has volunteered to be a mentor for principals every year. She's our go-to. Most principals take on one. There are times that she takes on two or three, she never says no. And the principals she mentors always come back and talk about how impactful, available and trustworthy she is. And so immediately I wanted to engage her in the work of P3 where we're growing leaders. And she has taken P3 to just great new levels with her partners that work with her in building the curriculum up in such a wonderful way that our participants leave with great survey information every single year about their preparation for being a principal and the love of the work and the love of the work that they get to do with Paige. So that is, I'm the introduction slide. It's all you.
Well, thank you for having me. I am very, very lucky and honored to be a leader in Leander ISD. And one of my passions is of course to grow other leaders. And thank you so much to Christine Simpson and Josh Haug and Brandon Evans for partnering with me for the past couple of years on a P3 prospective principal program. We are very lucky because we have very intelligent, student-centered, caring, compassionate leaders that are ready to lead campuses. We want to make sure that they get that opportunity to network with the other leaders in Leander ISD, people that are currently working in campus principal roles, but also our district leaders. They get the opportunity through this course. They meet seven times for three hours a time. And then in between, they are studying books like Excellence in Every Classroom and Principal Matters. They are shadowing our campus leaders and writing and reflecting about their experiences with the leaders. They develop a 30 day entry plan for when they are ready to interview for the principalship. And so what we're doing is we're really growing the next level of campus leaders. And as we keep building schools, we will have principals ready to, to lead those schools in a student-centered way. So we're very proud of our campus leadership profile and teaching all of the future leaders to be excellent Leander ISD, Team Leander ISD. There's no place like home.
This theme just continues to follow me this year. Cannot get away from it. I love it so much. So the other piece I want to talk about briefly is AAA. So AAA is for our aspiring assistant principals who are currently in teaching roles, who have already earned their administrative degree. Now, the model of AAA mirrors the model of P3 in that we have assistant principals that are leading the work. So Kristen, Alex and Brian Miller facilitate, but the work is being done and led through current assistant principals. So in and of itself, the way that we lead these programs is designed to infuse further leadership development in those that are doing the, the work as well. So we're very proud of the, the way that both progress. I can't talk anymore. Program, that's why you're here, programs have progressed. Thanks Paige.
Oh, sorry, she turned me off. That happens to me all the time. We have Brandon coming into, supporting every step on the path. He is going to take us back home with his area and showing the great work that they are doing there.
So we just heard about transportation. Just to give another shout out, we have Scotty Artterberry, who's our recruiter in transportation. She does an amazing job, puts together a lot of different things and just the overall staff. So you probably saw them in the city of Leander parade and different things. They've done, you can see everything that they've done, but they're trying to figure out different ways of being involved in the community. Well, I didn't want to read each individual one. So, but a big thing that they really, really enjoyed that they started out this year was the trunk or treat. And actually had it out at the bus yard at North there. The drivers loved it and the families that came out and did all that. So once again, their staffing is improving what they're doing and their culture is very important. Similar things are happening in CNS, just the relationship. I mean, the common theme that you're going to see throughout all the departments and operations side of the house is, is really working on building those relationships, building that culture and that climate of sustainability and making it a place that people get to come to work rather than they have to come to work. And that's something that you'll hear all of our directors and our staff talk about. But with having our partnership back with SFE and our, our staff back in our kitchens from different contests that they do within their own, own staff to our food tastings down at Vandergriff that we did and different chef days that Frank and his team do, it's just a lot of great things. And then custodial and plant services, just kind of rounding out our operations side of the house. Once again, that same kind of theme. If you haven't followed Plant Services Facebook page, shout out to them. You might want to do that. I learn something new and see something new every single day. Joey and his team in Plant Services are doing a great job. And what they're doing to staff and fill the different roles that we have open. And then also take care of those campuses and the needs of our students and our staff every single day. They're doing a great job with that. So I get to do the last slide and it's something that I am very proud of because of the work that the staff has been working on consistently. So it's a little grainy from where I'm at, but you can see it on your screen. Ken alluded to it in transportation. If you look at our CNS, transportation, plant services, facilities, every single department, their turnover percentage is drastically reduced. And that has to do every single day by the people that get to work there. And then also our directors that are impacting those staff every single day. Our staffing and our active staff ratios on the other slide there is just, I mean, we're filling positions. And a lot of the work goes to you guys for being able to make some of those adjustments within wages. But people don't leave jobs because of wages. People leave jobs because they're unhappy with the folks that they work with day in and day out. And our directors truly believe that, our assistant directors and all of our supervisors. So it's a great place to be. It's a great place we get to work every single day.
There, thank you. There's no place like L I S D. And that ends our presentation. If you have any questions.
So as I watched the recognition on the Texas Association of Future Educators, I just immediately had a connection with this presentation. And I, I mean, I know that they're just in high school and many of them could decide to pursue something else other than education. But is that an avenue that you have looked to in the past to just keep track of them and keep in touch with them?
Absolutely. Actually, our recruiters go out and work with all of our ready, set teach classes. So they go out and they teach them Kagan structures for building student engagement. They talk to them about resumes and interviewing in college and what it's going to be like and just all the things, all the things, anything and everything they might want to know. Then they also keep up with them through Instagram and through Twitter, X, whatever it is now. Not through Facebook because that's only for old people like me. But they do whatever, whatever the young ones are doing these days. They do keep track of them. We sent them, Jennifer sent out Christmas cards to them last year, asking, inviting them to come by the district, see us, check in. And then we do guarantee interviews to any of our ready, set teach students who come back. We are also looking at options for starting lower and like in elementary identifying. So Carrie Lynn and I are doing lots of research on that so that we can get them in as early as elementary school and teaching them to be teachers all the way up. So we absolutely are. It's a, it's an amazing thing to see them. And we have hired a number of our ready, set teacher, teachers back after college.
I have a question. Do we have a number? I know it's sort of broke down in percentages, but the exact number possibly about teachers that won't be coming back this year? For 24?
For 24?
A total?
I think we're at 258 as of today. I believe that's the number.
Okay. And I have another quick question. So last year, we voted to let people come in with a four-year degree that didn't have a teaching degree, but had a four-year degree. I didn't see exactly, was there a breakdown of how many of those teachers are going to stay?
Not in this presentation, but it's information that we could certainly get to you.
Okay. Cause I'm just kind of curious, you know, if they had a couple of years to figure it out.
Exactly.
How did they like it?
Yes, we have that, we have that data and we can definitely pass that along.
Thank you.
I had a question. Last March, this board approved special education stipends and also special education sign-ons. How has that been going out and trying to recruit special education staff members and also our IAs? Has that improved? Is that helpful? Has it been great?
It definitely has been a great selling point and the recruiters definitely use that when they're talking to special education applicants. I would say in looking at right now where we're at on staffing for sped, and this is off the top of my head, but it does feel like we're in a little bit better place than we were last year. And that we are keeping more of our sped teachers. And then also in the area of IAs, I feel like we're much better off than we were at this time last year. But we.
I think also just, just, I don't need this now. I think the area I'm particularly concerned about is our administration in special education, our diet technicians, our school psychologists. Just with the recent changes or that are going to be proposed for dyslexia. I'm just, I'm trying to get ahead of the storm and just want to make sure whatever we're doing, because we know that especially our child psychologists, like especially bilingual school psychologists are like a rare unicorn. And so I just want to make sure, what are we doing? What does that look like out there? How can we ensure that we're giving our students and our staff the best possibility?
Definitely. And as you know, part of the stipends that you all approved mid-year, those groups were part of that. And then we're, we're bringing dyslexia forward at the next board meeting during our total comp presentation. So I think you're, you're spot on in we're doing, going in the right direction to make sure we're getting the best of those.
And if I could also piggyback on the, the discussion of stipends and, and there's other things that we've done to help address where we've had problems hiring up staff. So yeah, overall, have those done what we thought they were going to do? And just later, if we can get an update on, is there now something else that's emerging? Or did we shore that up? And do we not need something and do we need it somewhere else? Are we good? Do we have to maintain, but we need to do whatever it is? If we could just get a status kind of on like how we've been addressing those high areas of shortages.
We can absolutely get that for y'all. One of the things that has been great is y'all releasing, early release of positions. When we had our L I S D in-person job fair, we were able to offer 28 letters of intent. And of those 28, we have actually hired 26 of them. So 26 of them took that letter of intent and have interviewed and done everything and will be employees this next year. So we're excited about that. And that comes from early release of positions so that principals can get the best the earliest possible.
So the other thing we've done is added a dollar to the wages for all of our South Side operational employees. We are 100% staffed in custodial and CNS on the South Side. That has never taken place.
That's great. That's a headline. That's, that's tremendous. Thank you. I do have a question and as you're talking.
I do have a question and as you're talking, Francesca and I remember when we were at Leadership LISD, it was so good to hear y'alls presentation there and we were like, oh yeah, and this is that point. Did you, and so, thank you for also not only bringing this presentation to the board, but your outreach that you're doing in the community as well. I think that's important for our community to see how much our district really is working on that staff support. I think it means something to staff as well that we care about them being here. It makes a difference for our students' experience in education. So, thank y'all so much for all of that. I do have one question and I don't know if you have it with you or you can just get it to us on our Friday memo, but I'm curious, as we keep talking about kind of the, the pool, if you will, that we can pull from is, is, is getting smaller and smaller, whereas as teachers are retiring, retiring is the normal, are moving out to go with family. I mean, there is a normal turnover rate that happens, but that doesn't seem to be matching. There's an imbalance here. So, I'm curious as far as what do you see is the pool that's coming in certifications to alt certifications? And do we see one growing? Do we see any, any differences? Are we concerned about a growth or one or the other? And your more boots on the grounds, you'll get into the nuances. So, you know, we hear about aspect, they're talking a lot about these educational preparation programs and what are stellar ones and what are not, and I would just love to see kind of how we approach it here as a district.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great point. We've been tracking that data since about 2016. So, we have a wealth of data that we can see year over year, how that has trended. So, we can pull that together for this year and take a look at it, see how we're trending, continue to trend.
So, I've just got one thing. I know we brought a lot of new teachers into the district and we matched them up with a mentor, which is wonderful. I'm curious, and maybe this is a peak question too, is that are we taking care of those mentor teachers that have taken on that extra work? I know that there was a stipend for them, however, it is very small, given the amount of work that it takes to help train up, especially the folks that have not had a certification yet. And I'm just curious if there's any, any way we can do a little better there because I know that we're going to continue to bring in folks that are new and we're going to ask our current staff to do extra stuff and we already know there's a lot on their plate. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that I think that the mentor stipend should be better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely take a look at that. Great, great request.
One last question. When do you guys do exit interviews? I would like to talk to some of them, if that would be okay?
We actually, the exit interview is online. It's a, a survey that we send to all staff as they exit. Many years ago, we did one-on-one with every person leaving, but with the number of people leaving, the growth of the district, we just, we had to switch over to an online survey system. Now, there have been years that we have done exit interviews when we had a lot of turnover. We would, we would take a number of teachers who left and, and do a personal phone call. So, that is something that we're looking at doing maybe next year.
Well, if it'd be okay, I would love to stop by the office sometime and just read some, if that'd be all right.
Sure. We have the exit interview data that we could certainly provide.
Rather than, I guess it's something you could share with us and with the board in the Friday memo or in CLOES. Thank you.
So, I have one last question and it's regards to the South end of the district. So, you've talked about the operations side, how that's fully staffed. My understanding is as far as like teachers and other staff are concerned that, or educators are concerned, that it's harder to hire and retain on the South end than in other parts of the district. Is that what you're seeing and is, what do you think we can do about that?
So, typically, they do the best when they're attempting to hire folks who live in that area. And so, part of what the recruiters do is when they're talking to and screening each applicant that comes through, they talk to them about, our district covers over 200 square miles. So, what would be an area that you would be most interested in teaching? And so, they, they funnel those folks who live more that direction out that way. And so, that's helped a lot and it's helped the campuses there not spend time interviewing people who drive out there and say, oh, if I didn't know where this was, I would have never accepted this interview. So, they definitely are asking those questions and looking at that because we want it to be a good experience both, both for the applicant and for the campus.
I had another question. We know we have a lot of new to students, to, new to country students in our district, right? We also have a lot of students in ESL and emergent bilingual. I'm just curious, what are we doing for the staff and helping also attract those staff to come here? Because I mean, I've seen the impact on my child's campus with the amount of new students to country and my concern is just making sure that one, we have those educators in place that are supporting those students, but also supporting those families. So, I'm just wondering, are y'all finding a barrier trying to recruit from this pool for ESL? What does this look like, Paige? I, I just, you know, I, we see the population changing, right? And I've, I, I see it in my kids' own campus and I'm just wondering, like, what does that look like? How are we able to recruit those educators in the classroom? Because we, we know the education landscape is changing, but my concern is just making sure we're, we're recruiting them in and we're giving them everything they need to feel supported.
Sure. Well, luckily, we have 100% of our teachers are dual language or ESL certified, so that really helps. Also, I was able to hire two dual language teachers at the job fair and they're both from the Dallas area, moving to this area. So, we are very lucky and Leander ISD has an excellent reputation. The dual language program is stellar. It's nationally recognized. I was at the NABE conference in New Orleans and with lots of, it's a national association for bilingual educators. People know where Leander ISD is. They want to come here.
And as far as ESL, we are working to, to get all of our ELA teachers ESL certified. We're working really hard on it and part of that comes from the hard work of Tina Dozier's group in, in providing the ESL academy to support our teachers through that. And then Matt Benz has found funds to pay for their tests and their certification once they pass. And so, those are the kinds of things that help, help get folks that certification and the training that they need.
That's exactly what I was looking for. So, I have, I'm going to be meeting with Tina later, but I'd like to follow up later just in regards to that certification and making sure, you know, what are we doing? No barriers, because I know it can be pain.
We also provide some things like 240 tutoring, which is an online to help them study for the test, because if you're old like me and you have to go back and take a standardized test like that, it's a little scary. So.
Just want to congratulate you really and thank you. When we, nationwide, there are universities that unfortunately are shutting down their school of education departments. There's a lot of other schools right now that are basically doing like auto-admit to their school of education because they, we are having a national teacher shortage. I think we all know why, you know, what way our society is attacking our educators and coming at teachers. And so, I think being able to look at this data and see how we're really, we're succeeding in this area is a testimony to you and your department, but also to Leander ISD that as a community of educators, of parents, of students, that this is something special, that we're able to do this in spite of everything else that's happening in this nation, in our state. So, thank you very much for all of that. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.[1147.13]
We are back from close and we're gonna move over, not close, it wasn't closed. We didn't do close. I promise that didn't happen. We're back from break. I'm sorry Cindy, I forgot to tell you that. No, just kidding people, we did not do close. We are moving back from our break into item 7C4, which is Consider Adoption of the 2024-25 Instructional Materials.
You ready? Talk amongst yourselves.
You can tell us why this is not on consent.
Yeah.
And I think Christine summed it up for you really well.
So is that a yes, I'm done? Or yeah? Okay. So I sent you guys, or uploaded in Board Book, the updated version of the presentation that I did in the March Board Meeting. And the only change that was really made to that was inclusion of the costs. As you know, we didn't have those in last time. So I've learned a lot through this adoption about purchasing science materials. And so the bids from the vendors, it was complicated in working with our purchasing folks in the textbook materials management team. So you got a board letter along with that updated presentation that kind of gave you an overview. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context to anybody who may be watching as well as you guys, how we ended up in a position where we do have a shortage, so to speak, in our instructional materials allotment. So if you go back to the 2021-23 allotment, so we anticipated as a district that time, I believe it was around $7 or $8 million, but the state actually funded right around $2 million. So it was almost a $6 million reduction, short, however you want to phrase that, from the state. And just the next year's adoption, which was a fairly small adoption, was $1.5 million. So that left us with a little over $2 million, I think. So that ate up a lot of the funds that we had. There was some carryover. We do have annual ongoing costs associated with previous adoption and other instructional materials that are pulled out of this allotment. There are license renewals, et cetera. So we ended up with a little fewer dollars than we needed to purchase. Science is the big piece of this adoption. So I want to talk a little bit about the importance of these materials. So if you remember about a month ago, the superintendent highlighted Henry Middle School. And they were piloting an Open Saiet and the Science Department had been working with the teachers and administration there. Well, that actually ended up being, at that time, we didn't know it, that is the resource that we're recommending for adoption. That resource is heavily dependent on science kits, which are costly. And in my mind, it also connects to our discussion that you were just having about staff retention and equipping teachers with the resources that they need to be successful. The new teaks, the new way of teaching, across all content areas, that leads to deeper learning and that heavy engagement in the classroom is in science really dependent on those materials K through 12. So that is the importance related to the cost. We want to ensure equity across campuses so we don't have to ask our teachers to run to Walmart or Target or other places and purchase things so they can teach the lessons as they need to. We want kids engaged in that study of phenomenon and inquiry and all that takes materials. We did, what took some time was looking at a variety of scenarios of ways we could do this cheaper. And there was just no way around it. We do have the Science Material Center. That will continue. That is a valuable resource to teachers in this district. When we're looking at K through 12 kits, that has primarily just been an elementary support. But even just focused on elementary, getting it up and running next year for all those grade levels. Plus, the kits do have proprietary materials in them that cannot be purchased off Amazon or any other place. So we do need those things to begin with. All that to say, this is really an important resource for our teachers. I know it's a big ask in terms of cost. But just wanted to talk through that with you a little bit. And I think that's really all I wanted to talk and here to answer any questions that you may have.
Quick question. What's, I just think it needs to be clearly stated that the IMA that we got from the state was significantly shorter than they usually allocate. So in this last legislative session, when we had our Texas Education Commissioner saying, "Oh, we're increasing IMA from last time," it wasn't really hard to do that. And so I think that's important because I appreciate you being very transparent and how we're getting an amazing utensil, tools for our teachers. I think it's fabulous. I love supporting our students and our teachers in this fashion. But when I look at the amount, if we had gotten our IMA funds the way it was supposed to have happened, the way it was traditionally dedicated to schools, we wouldn't be in this situation. So I just, I don't want to miss say what's going on here. It wasn't your math error.
No.
Because I feel we were significantly short.
So it was. It was a sick, nearly a, it was nearly a $6 million short in 2021-23. So when you pull out that adoption, then the annual cost, it eats up any carryover that we would have had. You know, you can kind of keep some of that money saved because you know you have a bigger adoption coming. In fact, our district, we do a great job at planning for these costs. So there was just no way around it. One thing I forgot to mention is the state also reorganized the way they do proclamations for CTE. So they had been through a full adoption, I can't remember the exact year, but now we're gonna do two career clusters pretty much every year. They will constantly be in adoption. But that wasn't really planned for as well. And then there was a significant surplus this year and there was no additional funds provided to make up for that additional adoption on top of science and then that nearly $6 million shortage to the previous biennium. So, great point. Thank you.
I just had a comment real quick. I attended the curriculum committees both this year and last year. And the amount of work that went into the selection of these materials, especially for science, was immense. It was an incredible process. I've never seen people get so much feedback. I mean, y'all had computers set up with the different topics and if anybody had questions, they were out at admin in Cedar Park. And our curriculum teams really went above and beyond to make sure that people understood what was happening with the new science, to make sure people were understanding the new materials that we needed to bring in. It was just an incredible process to watch and I just wanted to say that I really, really appreciate the time and the effort that you all put into all of this.
And they're here tonight. So I didn't even ask them to come. They just showed up. So they did, all of them. CTE, KIP is here for the social studies, AP adoption as well. Our CTE team is also, they could not be here tonight, but they'd also put in an immense amount of work as well. Thank you for that.
I move the Board of Trustees adopts the instructional materials as presented for use in subsequent purchase using the Leandry Independent School District 2024 Instructional Materials and Technology Allotment, IMTA. An additional fund balance is required to meet the instructional materials needs of our staff and students.
I second.
Christine makes motion and Francesca seconds. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank everyone else from that team that was here for that item. Thank y'all for being here. I just realized that y'all stayed all the way for that adoption materials and we didn't even have questions and stuff for y'all. But we appreciate y'all being here. So thank you all for being here for us. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move over to item 7C5, Consider Approval of Budget Amendment.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board of Trustees. Dr. Gearing, tonight, we're gonna just rehash what Chris Clark just mentioned for this next item. I won't spend a lot of time in detail. You just had a great conversation on it. Basically just formalizing what you had just approved to do a budget amendment to move that $2.2 million out of the general fund balance to pay for mainly the science kit. There were CTE and some other items in there as well. But we're asking you to, and we are recommending that this amendment be approved to provide those kits and the other items for, that were not, again, that were reduced when House Bill 3 went to effect in 2019, which those monies did not roll forward. So we bring this to you. Again, I won't spend a lot of time since it was just discussed. But if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer or to, on the money side.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the budget amendment to the 2023-2024 budget to cover the purchase of instructional materials as presented.
I second.
Christine makes motion, Francesca seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Motion passes. And that will move us over to the next item. And that's you again, which is discussion of our 2023-24 budget projections.
It is part of our normal monthly report during the spring. We bring to the Board each month our latest projection as we anticipate ending fiscal year '23-24. I do want to bring to your attention a couple of items. As you recall, last month, we were looking at a projected deficit of about $3.6, $3.7 million. That has now changed to a, prior to the action we just took place, this has changed to a $1.3 million revenues exceeding expenditures. The big part of that, two and a half million of that was wrapping up and finishing out the ESAR funds, which I had mentioned before. The other piece is the feds did not reduce the interest rate. And so that's a quarter point and we've reallocated that for the next few months. So we have gotten all that updated again after what we just did with the moving the money for the science adoption that will knock that down to about a million deficit. And then we anticipate at another future board meeting, moving some monies that was discussed prior for the Innovation Grant Fund. But that's really the big things we see coming out of this year's budget, maybe out of the norm. But other than that, we are continuing to revise our revenues. We do have a lot of vacancies in the spring. We are much better than we were a year prior. But we are, a lot of positions have become vacant throughout the second semester particularly and just haven't been able to fill it or we've had a sub in there. So that's a little bit more cushion than normal, not as much as last year. But pre-COVID, it would be definitely higher than pre-COVID. But so that's what we're, that's kind of what we're looking at. We've kind of anticipate finishing the year very close to breakeven, depending on, we, I know we have a couple of transfers and stuff coming up later on this year. But all said and done, that's kind of where we look at this. And again, that's $7 million now coming in with SHARs. That's, you know, I know you, I was getting there. I want to make sure. You know, if we had received our SHARs funds, and I say we, it's all the districts in the state of Texas had received the SHARs funds and because of the Human Health Services did not, you know, their appeals with their issues with the federal government, we feel that we are, you know, we get stuck in the middle of this. But we have done an informal appeal. We have not heard back yet. We will do the formal appeal, just like any other organization. You have to exhaust all the administrative things before you can take it to the next level. But all said and done, interest did help us out to help us a little offset some of that. Not all, but some of, about two-thirds of that reducing funding to the SHARs. But all said and done, we anticipate being pretty close, plus a million, minus a million at the end of this year, unless any major unforeseen things happen. But that's kind of where we plan on ending this fiscal year. So more than happy to answer any questions on that or any things you guys have.
Pete, just at some point, we're gonna need to do the breakdown because our district and our staff and our admin and actually the Board does such a good job of balancing this that I don't think the actual deficit and the amount of shortfall in funding that is not coming to the district that used to come to the district is actually being understood. We just talked about it in IMA. You're talking about it in SHARs. You can keep, you can keep going on with the not funding that basic allotment with inflation. All of this is just constraints and pressures on schools to try to operate even at the levels they are and not getting any of that support. And so at some point, I think we're gonna need some type of list so we can better articulate what's going on because it's confusing if you don't follow school finance. I get it.
I think we'll title that report Death by a Thousand Cuts. That's that one. I mean, it's just, you're every, you know, you're getting hit at every side, like you mentioned.
Well, and I think somebody said, "Well, the state spends, I don't know, more than 45 other..." The state spends more on education in Texas than 45 other states spend on their entire budgets. And so I went and looked. The 45 other states don't have nearly the amount of people alone in our education system. So we are a huge system. It takes a lot to fund. And when you think about districts are 82% payroll, we're really talking about funding districts. We're talking about funding our people, our staff. We just talked about how important the relationship is. So yes, I'll look forward to the, I won't look forward to it, but I'll be looking for the Death by a Thousand Cuts report.
Well, and you know, a lot of times when they make, the state legislators make that comment, they're including our individual property taxes in their contribution piece. And that's, that's a little asterisk that needs to be put on that number.
Yeah, it's definitely not an apples-to-apples comparison at all. Not even close.
So when I look at the, it was also in the previous one, oops, my screen just went up. Okay, so when you look at taxes gross, that is a property tax is the very first line. That's the property tax collections expected. Is that correct?
A budgeted and actual, yes.
Yes. And so that, there's a $100 million difference and that's really due to that property tax, not compression, the, what else? Tax relief, just.
Yeah, the Senate Bill 2.
Yes, yeah, tax relief in general. However, because there's the hold harmless, so if we needed that money and would fall short, then they make up the difference. But the total revenues is still $50 million less. And even though the recapture is $40 million less, it kind of all, it's all the same. Nothing changed.
Pretty much. I mean, you basically, you know, the legislature gets to say they increased funding for public education. You and I as individuals get to reduce the amount of property taxes that we pay in our individual homes because the school districts' MNO tax rate went down an additional 10.9 cents. And then as such, our amount of revenue we collect per WADA is less. And so instead of paying $57 million recapture, we pay $9.9 million in recapture, or approximately $10 million. So all three things together, it's about the same. The bottom line is basically the same. I mean, it's not to the penny, but it's relatively speaking.
I have more of a comment. It's the SHARs issue, issue, whatever. I would like to, like at a later date, not right now, because I don't see, you'll stop.
I don't think people understand what SHARs covers, right? It's our speech, I got a list here. It's occupational therapy, counseling, nursing services, physical therapy for our students that are disabled. And so I think for me is just trying to figure out what is that impact that's gonna have on us next year. We know we have an, what is it, 6% increase of students in special education this year. We know that population is growing. So this is not a now question, don't worry. But just what are we doing to prepare for that impact because the state is continuously not being nice to special education in Texas?
All right. If there's no further questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It is 8:39 PM and the Board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by the Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Pending or Contemplated Litigation or Attorney/Client Privilege Matter, Texas Government Code 551.074, Deliberation Regarding Resignations, Terminations, Employment Reassignments, Duties, and Evaluation of Personnel and Public Officers, Texas Government Code 551.0821, Deliberation Regarding Matters Whereby Personally Identifiable Information Regarding One or More Students Will Be Disclosed. No Action Will Be Taken During Closed Session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the Board returns to open session. It is 8:44 PM, and the Board is returning to open session. And we do not have any motions related to closed session, so this meeting is adjourned.